What's your favorite thing?
I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the Library Board of Trustees of the City of Spokane for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. We have a signup sheet for visitors, so we can have a record of who's at the meeting. And then also, if you'd like to write public comments there, it's a sheet to sign up for that as well. So make sure that you've signed in. And then I will start with our land acknowledgement. All of the Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands of Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chubba Band. Since time immemorial, Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and herded these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one of other stories so that we may nurture the relationship with people of Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this land. All right. Let's see, we did have one proposed agenda change, and that was to change, to take item thirteen D, the Adult Programming Overview, and put that at the beginning of new business. That was the only change so far. If you have any other changes? All right. So we will adopt the agenda, that change. And now our first item of business is approval of the September twenty twenty-three board minutes.
A move.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Call in favor? Aye? All right, motion passes. And next, we have approval of September twenty twenty-three bills and contributions.
I've moved to approve the September bills and contributions in the amount of one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye? All right, motion passes. And now we have the financial report with Nicole.
Thank you so much. Okay, so for September twenty twenty-three library operations update for the cash investments trend, at September, the library is able to pay one hundred and sixty-one days of our operating costs. The cash and investment balance is now six million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand and eighty-two dollars. This does include the reserve for capital and net of encumbrances. It's currently at one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six ninety-four. For the expenditure trend, our total operating expenditures for September were nine seventy-three, six oh four. Of that amount, six ninety-eight, six forty-nine was for personnel. Our capital books and materials were forty-nine thousand, five ninety-three. Our third-party security guard costs were forty-two thousand, one forty-six. Our utilities for all of our branches, including the storage sites, were twenty-eight thousand, two ninety-one. We also purchased a utility van for the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. This was a twenty eighteen portrait, it had a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. And we are now using that for the outreach. So it's a lot smaller than what they're using. It's a lot easier to get around town with our books. And then the end of September did mark the end of the third quarter. At state, we've currently covered and spent seventy-two percent of our expenditure budget, right? Right on track towards year-end. So moving on to the bond update. There were no obligations executed during the month of September. And here, there's a little snapshot here for our remaining budget on the bond, which is one million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. I will kind of just, just an exciting tidbit, at the early part of October, we did continue with the spending of the books and materials. So we've spent the entire two million-dollar budget that was laid out for that, getting up bond projects. At the Nevada site, so our formal request for proposals is going to be published in the Cogent as of tomorrow, the eighteenth. And then the second week will be next week, on the twenty-fifth. And then a notice of completion was filed for Indian Trail shelving and signage fabrication. And in addition to that, we've been able to do a notice of completion today for both the South Hill and Indian Trail casework. So that was really great. So for business office updates, we're currently on track and moving forward to bring our levy resolution forward to council in November. So our strategy is still is to campaign Spokane Public Schools, as well as work with the Parks Department. Andrew and I currently are scheduled to present with council next Monday on the twenty-third. The inventory process is still underway, so we're working closely with the community technology department. They're basically doing a large cleanup of the older and obsolete items that were from prior bonds. So that'll be a little bit of a business for us. So with that, I'd like to open for any questions.
And so on the Nevada site bidding, we're opening that up. So we published the bids here, and then we're hoping that we'll get kids to come here.
Yes.
November and December.
The bids are due on November. So we've got till mid-December to have everything fully.
Turn around.
Yeah. I have a hard deadline, so.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for Nicole? Thank you, Nicole. All right, and the next item is the chairman's report. Chairman's report. So we will move on to the library executive report.
All right, thank you. I have filed a written report as well as part of Hackett. A couple of highlights. I recently attended the Washington Public Library Director Retreat. It's held in Spokane Valley this year. This is a meeting that happens twice a year with all the library directors in the state. Real interesting discussions for legislative issues that might be coming up in the next year as part of the Washington Legislature, including book bans and challenges, some possible legislation around that. Legislation around the dissolution of libraries. If you've been following library news as I do, you'll know that in Washington, there was an initiative to dissolve that district's book challenges in the community. It failed. And by corporate. But there is interest in looking at how libraries are dissolved, and they're an appropriate threshold that and also issues on collection control. Again, that's around there is some national effort to book bans, which falls flat. Amendment rights. So we'll be following that closely. I am on the Legislative Committee for the state, so I'll be getting updates on that as things are forward. As part of that retreat, we also gave some impromptu tours to some impressed folks. The Central Library, the Hive, they're also interested in hoping to do some renovation projects as well. They're on the West Side Tacoma area, so that was one to do. Our Liberty Park Library won another award here with the AIA Washington Civic Design Honor Award. That ceremony was held in late September, so it was great to see that really beautiful facility. Give some due credit. As far as our DEI efforts go, for our internal efforts, we'll be discussing the book Unnasty Autism later this month. And we also created a blog post reading recommendations and offered a few programs to celebrate Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month. The launch of Startup Spokane's website was awesome. Alina and Mark really did a great job with that. Great turnout. It's an effort between Spokane County Library District, Spokane Public Library, the NSI to really come together around simplifying navigation for the many business resources that we offer and that are out there in the community. Lots of interested folks were there around this effort, so that was awesome to see. And then a couple of hires for our staff. We were able to fill our special events coordinator that was taken by Sam, who's now our HR. So Kira Barker is now in that new role. They're getting acquainted with our system and transitioning into that new role, or into a new role to her. And we also had a handful of lateral transfers amongst our service staff. Both Rachel Sullivan and Quinn Fredericks moved into a full-time LCA position at Central. Jesse Sandoval moved into a full-time position as our new community technology coordinator. Alan Wagner did officially retire. So he's been working with Sam over the past couple of months in the transition, so really excited to have Sam on board to take us in Sam's direction for that department. And our staff's, our star spotlight for September went to Quinn Fredericks, Ashley Locke, and Colleen Kishon. This group collaborated to create a system for looking at and collecting workouts for each of the floors in Central. You can imagine the complexity of visitors that we see. So we're really just trying to get a better handle on the data folks that we're seeing, how we can better manage not only just the customer service, but future security as well. So really great to see that foundation of tool in place for us. Also, as far as the City of Spokane goes, continue to work with the mayor's administration and city council in creating budget allocation for twenty twenty-four. There were then two joint budget workshops in October. And as Nicole mentioned, we're working with city council to get our levy asked along their agenda, hopefully, for the mid-November and get something out in February. And just as the mayor's preliminary budget proposal included a flat general fund allocation for the library in twenty twenty-four. It won't be service cuts for us, but we will need to dig a bit deeper into our reserve.
How do you decide what you're gonna do? Do you have like a calendar mapped out, or?
We have a handful of books that we'll look at and topics that we survey staff about, so what topics they're interested in learning about. And Amanda's team actually do a lot of work in determining, looking at different options that are out there. We'll, you know, give book reviews and things like that. It's librarians do. But, and we try to be topical as well, as far as what are the current events or challenges that are out there that we feel like we should and we just, we really try to change it up and really try to expand our perspective. Sometimes it's books, sometimes it's a documentary. Summer is generally easier to watch a documentary than it is to read a book sometimes with travel. So yeah, we're always looking for new topics. Then we offer those out to the public as well, so they can check out.
All right. All right, thank you, Andrew. So I would like to welcome our new council liaison, Brian O'Ritt, who are meeting. Welcome. Thank you for coming. And this is your opportunity to give us an update on what's been happening at council.
Sure. Well, I am honored and excited to be here when council appointed me to this. I was especially excited. I appreciate meeting Andrew and updates on all the great work you've been doing. The library's always been an important part of my life. When I was a kid, when I used to retreat to our little library in Old Montana, when there was more snow on the ground than we knew what to do with, that was always a great sanctuary. And then I, I probably have known in Spokane as having a hobbit house, so the books of Tolkien have always played a important role in my life. And then when I was in college, I had a contract with both the county and city libraries to travel around and to balloon and magic shows. Every library, then there was a book that was a theme for the show, so fond memories of that as well. So just really excited to be here. As far as council business, our big focus right now is on the budget, as Andrew said. If anybody knows where we can find that one, really helpful. We have to make some tough decisions, but the library, if I remember right, I think was one of two, only one of two organizations that are still within budget. So maybe we should just put you all in charge of everything.
You want to take that on?
Maybe that fits.
Maybe next year. Just a couple of dates, I think, to keep in mind. So on October thirtieth, there'll be a revenue hearing, so that'll be time for us to make their voices heard on what their funding priorities are, what are important to them. The mayor's budget will be released November second. And then we will pass balanced responsive budget by November twenty-seventh. Coming up, and I'm also really excited to hear Andrew and your staff's presentation at council.
Any other questions? That's right. And now we have our communication report with Amanda.
Hi. So as Andrew mentioned, we had a really successful launch of the startup Spokane Be Brand and Website. And if you were there, Alina hosted, Alina and Mark hosted an amazing party at the Hive. Tons of turnout for that, and it was a lot of fun. We also had a really successful community scanning day on Saturday in partnership with the Carl Maxey Center. And that resulted in coverage on every single one of our local media channels, of X, Y, Cram, KHQ, Inlander, and Spoksmen all covered that. So very cool to see. Had great turnout. Alina told me that it was a small number of people, but they brought buckets of things to be scanned. So they were busy all day scanning things, really added a lot to our archive. And now it's starting conversations with other community partners who might be interested in this. And also, we've extended the offer, like, if you didn't make it that day, you could come in to the Inland Northwest Special Collections and have those things scanned anytime. Our staff day is tomorrow. We are closed all day, and staff will be coming to Central to learn, connect, celebrate, eat some good food. And we've really been busy preparing for that. And I brought everybody t-shirts today, so if you didn't grab one, or if your size is up there, let me know. Every staff member gets a new t-shirt tomorrow as part of staff day. And the Emerging Artist from ECU started at the Hive. This is a really cool program that's allowing Eastern Washington University art students to start out there, like graduate, and then start out their career continuing to do art. Because if anybody's really known an artist, you know, that's sometimes hard. You graduate, and then, you know, you have to get a job. And so this is an opportunity for people to continue, and we'll be able to promote that work, get them working in the community, and showcase their art. And then later on today, I'm going to show you preliminary designs for the Library Levy Information Only Campaign. So we're gearing up for February or twenty twenty-four, and how we can appropriately talk about that topic. And we're also, and this is a little sneak peek or a hint, next month will be for the previewing a Be Your Best Self campaign. It's a new campaign that we're working on that we're really excited to show you, and that'll be launching in mid-November. So right around when we meet next, you'll start to see that. On social media, one of our main, our most popular posts this past month was about the POD, the POD Study Room at South Hill. It was a really popular, both in social media and in reality, they're always busy, always occupied. And then I think, if you recall, in September, we had no earned media for the entire month. It was just an odd blip on the radar, because here, again, we've got a lot more earned media. And this doesn't even include all the earned media that we got earlier to speak on, that we didn't get. And that concludes my reports.
So I was thinking for our new board members, you or Andrew, say a little bit more about the lines we need to draw on the Information Only Campaign.
So that will actually be my presentation later today. I'll kind of share that later in the agenda.
Maybe that's why it was on my mind. All right. All right, any other questions for Amanda? Okay, excellent. Thank you, Amanda. All right, and now we have the programming report with Jason.
All right, you can see in your packet there, you had another two hundred and seventy-two events and programs last month, which seems insane, but it's true. Thirty-five hundred or so people came to those. Lots of that is still, always storytime, it's about half of our attendance, which is great. The value score this month, the average was sixteen point eight eight, which is a drop from last month. But the explanation for that is we've changed the way that some things are measured. So if zero people show up at your event, you get a zero on the value score now, instead of getting zero plus your value score. Because we just wanted to be able to see the things that weren't being attended. And in fact, we made some changes based on that. We had Rema Lisa, who's our arts specialist for youth, was trying out some new scheduling for programming, doing back-to-back programs, because they were getting the wrong age groups at the programs, and so they wanted to do stuff for both of them. Turns out, not really working, because they've done it three or four times now and had zero in three of the four. So we're making decisions. It popped out on here, and they're making a decision to kind of try something new in that scheduling. It's just not something that's working. A couple of programs I wanted to highlight to kind of show how the value score is being applied here. I didn't put it in the packet, but there's a Avoid the Mistakes That Tag You as an Amateur Writer. It's a program that Sharma Shields coordinated with Nora Profit, The Writing Loft. It's a program that had a value score of thirty, and also had a pretty high attendance of twenty-one people to this workshop, which means the average, the adjusted score is thirty-four, so it's great. It's way above the line. On the other end of that, you can have a program that doesn't have as high of a value score, like the Spokane Carvers Association Artistry in Wood Show, which is a partnership we did at the Hive. It only had a value score of twelve to begin with, but two hundred and twenty-two people came to it, which does bring that score up to twenty-seven-ish. So it shows you, there's, there's different ways you can get the high score. And then, the more important one, when you speak of DEI, we had Spectrum did a Create in the Community with Spectrum, which was all-inclusive, everybody drop in, create art. Everyone's welcome. It had a value score of thirty-six, which is very high to start with. I only had three people show up, but it does show that it got a thirty-seven adjusted score. So it's higher than any of the other scores, so it shows that the emphasis on inclusion is showing up in there. So we won't be dropping a program like that because three people showed up, because we know how valuable it is. We'd like to get more than three, but it's somewhere to look at it. But yeah, I mean, still trying to figure out how to use this chart that I've given you here, but it's adjusting it. We didn't have tacos and tequila that threw way off this month, so it is probably more accurate. There's some stuff with Denise, our Youth Services Manager, we're gonna look into storytime and make sure that we're scoring it accurately. It might raise the minimum, because right now, we set the minimum at seven for a program. Has to be a seven before you could do it, because that's what storytime is. But we think that we're undervaluing storytime. So we move that up, it's probably gonna move the minimum up with it, so just improving programming as we go. Any questions? It's a list of all the programs you guys got there.
I appreciate the play-by-play that you're giving us as you're trying to figure out a tool to manage.
Yeah, we're really close. I think that I kind of faked it to get the zeros in there this last time, because I couldn't figure out how to do multiple formulas in one cell. There's a way to do it, but not in the thirty minutes I had. But you, you weren't around. I know. I don't want to feel dumb. So yeah, I know. So I'm gonna talk to Nicole and figure that out. But the only thing I could see us adjusting is some of the weighting of some of the underserved communities. Because it does, if one person does a program, it makes it a hundred times more valuable because of that component. I don't know. I want it to be more valuable. I don't know if I want it to be so much more valuable that it's gonna outshine everything else. But I'll keep you posted.
Yeah, the iterations have been very all right. I'm glad we didn't have to hear about statistics.
I can talk about upper control limits.
Any other questions?
Is there a weight for, like, the Spectrum example, if you're doing it with another community partner, as opposed to someone in turn?
Yeah, it's, they're in the whole little quiz you take at the beginning. There's a question about, are you working with a global community organization expert? And then if that community organization is run by historically underserved communities, there's more points for that. If the audience is for underserved communities, you get more points for that, too. So that's, the Spectrum one shot way up because of those questions. So, but it is, it's really good that we work with those groups, the groups like that, to get the communities of Spokane represented that aren't white, straight, cisgender people at everything, so I'm glad we're weighing those.
Jason?
Yeah.
Okay, now we are finally ready for new business, and we're gonna start with our Adult Programming Overview with Becky.
Got a slideshow. Hey, my name is Becky May, and I'm a librarian who does teen and adult programming. And I'm with Vanessa's adult programming team. So I am a generalist, but all of my coworkers around me have specialties, but I think I have the most fun, because I gotta do all sorts of different kinds of programming, which it can range from things not as interesting for me to like super, super fun, but all of it's valuable. So I'm gonna just share some of it. It was kind of hard for me to choose, so I went with the programs I have really good pictures of. A recent one is a partnership with South Asian Cultural Association. So they got a grant from the City of Spokane to bring in two really amazing programs for our community. So they were both at the Bean, and then the night before, they wanted to do a workshop for the community, so we hosted it in this room. So on the left side is the classical music, South Asian classical music program. And on the right is the dancing one I have to show you. No, like I was watching it to be, like, being presented. Amazing. So I would love to work with them in the future, if they're able to get another grant. So I have an incredible presenter, Divika, and she's been doing programs with me for a year and a half. And she's up to about two programs a month, because she's multi-talented. So this, this is kind of painting. In this room, on the left side, we crammed in seventy-six people, which was, I was shocked I could fit that many. So I had to do a registration list for future programs, just in case that happened again. It's a great problem to have. So on the right side is a young girl who is there, who's doing this gorgeous kind of painting on her hand. I'm always impressed by beginners who come in and just go for it and think through it themselves. And I tried to do it, and I will not show you a picture of it. Another one is the Indian Ragoli. So on the left side is probably more what it's supposed to look like, but I loved the picture on the right, because this was this young kid who was in there having an absolute blast, super excited to show me his creation. And that just made my day, because all ages come, and the great thing with art is I don't feel like you can really do it wrong. You just come and you have fun, and it's all sorts of different artistic expressions. So that's another one that she and I rotate through on the schedule. And then this is exercise at the library. So the top left corner, Divika does Bollywood dancing. I'm gonna be honest, I don't often take pictures in our exercise programs. It's really awkward for people. And I'm also, I'm actually in here trying to get some exercise too. So this is a picture of her dance school. Uh, so she'll do classes here and also she recommended a really good friend of hers who does Bangra Bollywood dancing. So I've been hosting that monthly at the party. And then Tai Chi is in the middle, and this is why I had to do this presentation early. I'm leaving here right after to go host this program at South Hill again. And then on the top right is Indian yoga. Divika also teaches and it happens in this room. And I took this picture normally I don't do that, but because filming was happening that day with commercial and I thought it was pretty cool. And that attendance has grown. So, um, in with exercise, this obviously isn't an exercise class, but this is encouraging people to go out into nature. So, uh, Holly from the Washington Trails Association has been doing yearly programs with us for like five or six years. She gets incredible attendance. People are very interested in this organization. Just has a really, really good information. Um, especially even for their website, if you can't see her talk, uh, I just think it's, it's really great for me. So this was a recent one I hosted just a few days ago here at Shadle Mantic Cafe. So it's the Kansas Air Waste. And their mission is to reduce the amount of plastic that we're putting out into the environment, um, and encouraging people to reuse. So on the left side, this lady is showing off these bags, like produce bags that are made out of old t-shirts. Which I thought was an incredible idea because I have all these t-shirts that I want to do with. And on the right side, um, so people could come in with, uh, clothing items and they would try to mend them for them and she'll have to do it. So we'll continue doing that with them. Uh, poetry praising. So Stephen Pitters is on the far left there. Uh, we have a recruiting program with him where every few months we go to different libraries and post an event where you have a local poet station, um, writer. And I just, this one was at South Hill and I was especially excited because there was this nine-year-old poet who was the most confident person who came and just presented her poetry. Was such, I just was amazed. I'm like, she's more confident than I am. I loved it. Uh, so we'll be hosting more of these. And then braiding, uh, oh, this, this is so much fun. So we did about four braiding programs, um, with a little braider. This first one is about the Hillier Library. Got a great turnout, all ages. Um, and it was so much fun, even watching like the kid trying to create his poems here or, you know, other people, just the different braiding that was happening. It's really awesome. I'm hoping to do these again, but, um, the presenter isn't able to do anymore at the moment, but those are just always great. Uh, Spokane Taiko, which if you've ever been to one of their performances, you need to bring earplugs. Incredible. And it is also incredibly loud, but it was really exciting since last May and they had not done in-person performances in, you know, since COVID. So there was just this, a big group came and people were just so excited to be back together. I love hosting those. And I don't have good pictures of these programs, so I just wanted to show you, like Alzheimer's Association. They're amazing. They come in and do informational programming for caregivers. Um, I wouldn't say it's like exactly medical advice, that they're not doctors coming in, but they're, they're helping build communities. So I noticed before programs, sometimes a group, uh, people who are coming to it will already be talking, like they know each other outside. And they come in and then they have their meeting. And, uh, that just made my library heart really happy to see a community building happen. And then Spokane Wells Trust probates and they come and do state programming, uh, state planning programming. And I feel like I learned something new at every program, hosted this several times. And the First Interstate Bank is doing a public financial program with us. We're taking a break in the winter months. Um, and it's really great because people can come and ask a lot of questions. It's usually in this small setting. Um, I feel like it's less intimidating. Uh, so these are some very important things I think. Yes, there are many more programs, but that's just kind of scratching the surface.
Excellent. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Any questions? All right. And now we are back to beginning of our new business section, library levy information only. Amanda?
Okay. For your earlier question, uh, we're putting together a library levy information only campaign. So as you know, July, but in 2024, probably in February, the library will ask voters to renew or reject the levy that funds. Go the next slide. Um, 18% of library operations. If renewed, the library lid lift will continue the existing levy at the current rate for three years. So that's, that's where we're at. Um, and then what I'm here to talk about is that there's this longstanding misperception that those who work at publicly funded libraries can't speak about library measures um, on public time or public money. And that's technically true if you're advocating to vote yes. But, um, we worked with a nonprofit called Every Library and we worked with them for both the bond and the last levy. And they really take the stance and, and we do too, that it's library staff's duty to tell the public what's at stake with the library levy or library bond. So we're not saying you need to vote yes, you know, if you love libraries, you vote yes. You say, you know, this is what happens if this passes and this is what happens if this fails. So just like we are, um, you know, provide information on any topic as a library, the same sort of thing. We're sharing the information on what happens if it passes and what happens if it fails. So if you go to the next slide, I've started putting together some of those pieces that explain that. Um, obviously we haven't printed or produced any of these, but we're getting them ready so that when we officially are on the ballot, um, we can start printing them. So what you see here is the bookmarks, the postcards that really explain, um, if it passes and if it fails, where our funding comes from, what it will look like on your ballot, what the deadlines are. So just sharing all the information so that voters can make a choice how they want to vote. Um, so like I say here, you can't advocate a yes vote as a paid employee, um, or on library property, um, as you're working. But, um, we can share all of this information about the, about the measure. And so we'll be doing bookmarks, posters, flat screen signage, social media, um, and we'll also have a webpage that has all of the information. So here's just kind of some of the things that you can say. Um, there's a library measure on the ballot. The exact data around, it's a renewal of seven cents per thousand year, $1,000 of assessed home value for a duration of three years. If the passes, the library, if it passes, the library will maintain expanded operations put in place by the levy lid lifts in 2013 and 2017. And if it fails, the library will experience diminished operations services. Uh, some of those other pieces I go into more detail about both of those things. Um, and then you can also share voter registration and ballot deadline information, where the ballot boxes are, all things that we typically do anyways. And then what you can't say is advocacy, you know, oh, yes, if you care about kids in libraries, you'll vote yes. A vote for the library is a slam dunk. You can say those things to your family and friends at home or at bar, but not when you are working as a library. So any sort of get up, vote or place of language you can do, um, anything. Yeah, advocating while you're. Now I do, like, I know it's a little different with court trustees and as we get closer, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, and whatever sort of action, you know, committees we might have, but this is, this is what we have planned for the information.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you.
And now we have a proposal for a subcommittee to use Nevada property sale.
Yeah. So this is a, a follow-up from last month's presentation. Uh, it's a complex endeavor that we're looking at, uh, by possibly bringing on, uh, Pride International onto the Nevada site. Housing and, uh, also additional library space. The community rooms are a part of the project. Um, so we want to give it due diligence that relationship like that deserves. And we're seeking two, uh, board members to serve on a subcommittee to review and make the recommendations. I know Gary's not here, but he has expressed interest, uh, in serving on the committee. And I know Annie has expressed. We can only have two members.
Yep. Well, I think a committee is a really good idea. Um, there are lots of details. Um, and I think that.
I agree. Okay. Yeah.
All right. Well, I will trust and support.
Did you guys have a special committee when the Hive was beginning? Um, obviously different scope and budgets.
We didn't because the conversations took place over a longer period of time.
Yeah.
Where you were reporting on developments, uh, on a monthly basis, uh, the, uh, development of that partnership.
Yeah.
And so the timeframe here is a little bit. So, uh, we, but we still want to give it due diligence.
I think the Hive conversation was also. Yeah, for the bond. So why is this?
There were obvious benefits between land swaps and everything. City. It just called for a different, different review.
Yeah. All right. Well, I think that we formed a subcommittee to review Nevada property sale or lease. And, uh, I think. Seconded. All in favor? Aye. Passes. And now we have a review of the holiday library.
Uh, so we are looking at, have been looking at our holiday policies and wanting to add early closures on the day before Thanksgiving, as well as New Year's Eve, if that does fall on a date. Um, so currently on Wednesdays, we're open until seven. We're wanting to close earlier the day before Thanksgiving, so at 5:00 PM. And then if New Year's Eve does fall on a date for that, it's applicable to close at five as well. Um, so we also attached holiday policies. We need to see what it looked like in red, what would be added.
All right.
Yeah. So I had one, uh, one edit, I think, to the policy language, the last blurb. I think it's supposed to be if New Year's Eve falls on a Sunday instead of a Thursday. So I would, uh, propose that. Approving the motion. Uh, does anybody have any questions? For the discussion on the voting.
My question is going to be related to what that looks like staff, but that's all mapped out here in terms of holiday thing.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the new policy? So moved. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right. Motion passes. Okay. And with that, uh, we're back to, are there any additional agenda items, changes that? Right? And did anybody sign up for public comment? That's the online. All right. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November 21st, uh, at the Indian Trail Library. And we are not having a session this time. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.